I hear by call the order, the City Council Special Meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is now called the order. Everybody can stand up and do the flag salute. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call, please.
Councilor Williams?
Here.
That's his audio.
Yep. Councilor Quetta, Councilor Pearson, here. Councilor, our mayor keeper.
Ah, here. Well, we have a full form. We have all of everybody present with one on, uh, online. So we'll just go right into our pre-arranged presentations. Uh, we have a presentation by, who is our first presentation?
SGR and Mark. Um, oh gosh. McDaniel, thank you. I was thinking McGraw.
All right. So we'll let SGR give their presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. And am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, are you able to see my cover slide there? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening to discuss our proposal to assist you in finding your next city manager. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight some key points included in our proposal. I'm going to let Mark McDaniel tell you a bit about himself here and his ties to Oregon in a few minutes. But let me take a moment to share a little more about myself. I'm a lifelong Oregonian. My name's J.J. Peters, and I grew up in eastern Oregon, Ontario, to be exact, and came to the Portland metro area to attend Portland State University straight out of high school and have lived on the western side of the state ever since. Though I still make it to eastern and central Oregon regularly to visit family and Boardman has often been a nice resting spot on my travels to and from eastern Oregon. Before I joined the SGR team last year, I spent over twenty-two years in local government, working for Clackamas County. I spent the majority of those years overseeing recruitment selection for all county departments, and I still reside in Oregon City. Mark and I are both extremely excited to be considered, to have the opportunity to assist you with this important search. A little bit about SGR. For over twenty years, we have focused on the success and innovation of local government. Our firm is different from many others because our team is made up of former local government professionals who intimately understand the challenges elected leads and leaders and the boardman staff face. In fact, Mark will tell you a little bit more about his background, but he's very experienced and familiar with what it takes to be an excellent city manager. Our executive recruiters have decades of experience in local government. SGR is the nationwide recognized thought leader in local government management, and we are actively engaged in local government operations, issues, trends, and best management practices. SGR is a Texas-based firm with our corporate headquarters located in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. We've conducted hundreds of city manager and city administrator recruitments across the nation, highlighted in our proposal, including a number here in the Pacific Northwest. We also have team members throughout the nation. Mark is based in Texas, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm based here in Oregon. Mark, would you mind introducing yourself and providing a brief background of our process?
Sure, and I'll go by McGraw as well. I'm a big fan of Tim McGraw, so. Yeah, so a little bit about me. I was in public service, primarily city management, most of my career for thirty-five years, working in seven different cities, ranging in, you know, small-size rural communities and then also very large metropolitan communities at the either assistant city manager or city manager level. I've got a pretty extensive network of local government colleagues, not just at the city management level, but all levels in city government. I'm a life member of TCMA and, which is the Texas City Managers Association, as well as ICMA. And I also served as president of TCMA and executive vice president for ICMA, representing about a quarter of the US or the middle of the US. I currently serve as an ICMA and TCMA senior advisor, which means that it's a volunteer service that I counsel and coach folks that are mid-career or any point in their career about city management. So my network is very fresh. I've been retired from city management right around a year. And so I've been conducting searches for SGR since then and have done multiple searches, including several city manager searches. And then ties to the Oregon area. I was actually born in Medford, and my dad was, grew up in Jacksonville and attended Central Point High, and so I've got, I definitely have ties and family still in the Oregon area and love to be a part of that area. In fact, I'd say half of my recruitments right now, if not more, are in the northwest, primarily Oregon and Washington. And Oregon specifically, I'm currently working with the League of Oregon Cities to recruit their executive director. Also in, finish up Springfield, Oregon, a couple of recruitments there. Walla Walla, which is obviously not Oregon, but close by. We actually launched that search today and then have conducted searches in Ritzland, Washington as well. Next slide. So I'll talk now about our methodology, and I'll go through these quickly because I know we have limited time. So what we'll do initially is set up a time to meet with the team there, whether you use a committee or the council is the committee. And I'll meet with you and talk about the recruitment, what your expectations are and your desires. JJ will also send you a welcome email asking for a lot of additional information so that we can get going right away on developing the recruitment profile. I typically do a number of interviews with stakeholders, and that can be not just city council members or counselors, but also the staff. And I've done virtual meetings with all employees as well, and then, of course, community members and whoever else that you would like for me to meet with. This would be in addition to the information that we're gathering via JJ's email, just to get a better flavor of what's really desirable in your next city manager. We'll also talk then, once we nail down our recruitment profile, which will take a little while because we'll go back and forth on that. We'll, we'll publish a draft, which will include all interview notes and photos that you provide. Send that to you, let you review it, decide if it's appropriate, and oftentimes go back and forth a couple of times, maybe even more, until we get it exactly right, because it's such a key tool in our recruitment process. Once we do that, then we confirm the recruitment plan and timeline with specific detailed dates on what's going to happen when. It's just that the recruitment profile or brochure is a little bit of a wild card and how long that that takes, depending upon, you know, the data and so forth. And how many interviews would you like for me to conduct? Next slide. So now we're on to step two, which is advertising. This is where I think SGR really sets itself apart. We have over forty-seven thousand opt-in subscribers to our regular newsletter. We also have a lot of folks that sign up to receive any notification of additional openings. In fact, I, we posted Walla Walla today, and within seconds I was getting applications just because of the number of people that are signed up. So our reach is extensive, but we also communicate, you know, one-on-one with folks and whether that's a phone call or through email and so forth about the position. So, you know, a lot of the best candidates aren't necessarily looking, right? So I have to really reach out based upon what you tell me that you're looking for and work my network as well as the network of our twenty-two-plus recruiters nationwide, where we cross-pollinate, so to speak, with sharing leads on potential candidates. And then, as I said, we communicate with those active applicants to keep them engaged. Next slide. So this slide, you know, is so important for us these days. You can see there's the stats that I want to point out here, mostly that, you know, fifty-four percent has been the growth in the last five years in the use of social media for recruitment, and seventy-nine percent of job seekers use social media for job search. And a significant number of folks that might be candidates are actually passive candidates just by monitoring their social media. So social media is so key, and, you know, I've become quite a proficient user of LinkedIn in particular, but also other platforms and using whatever tools there might be to take advantage. And I will say that last year, or actually it was this, earlier this year, I think we, we reached a record number of applicants for a position I was recruiting for, deputy city manager, a hundred and fifty-seven applicants. For Fort Collins, I had ninety-eight. For Wallo, I'm sorry, Kennebuck, I've already, I'm already up to fifty. And typically, our pools are around twenty-five-ish. So, and that's not just, that's nationwide, just because the pools have gotten smaller, but because the way that we work our networks and the social media, we've really done great outreach and been very successful. Next slide. So on to step three, where we do our initial screening or review, and then you select your semifinalists. I'll review the entire group, and I'll sort them into high probability, medium probability, and low probability as candidates. I won't rank them, you know, one, two, three, four, five, so to speak, but I'll put them into those groups. And if you have any internal candidates, that would be a fourth group. Now, I'll present all of those to you with a lot of information about each candidate. We keep all their applications confidentially enough to that point. And then, once you select your semifinalists, then we'll provide you all the data that you need on those semifinalists. But, you know, it'll take a while to get through that, but you'll have sufficient information to make a decision about who you want to include as your semifinalists. You'd be selecting typically around twelve semifinalists at that point from the triage that I do with you on all candidates. You know, I won't just kind of leave you hanging as far as here's your candidates. You'll have a group there that clearly meets or exceeds expectations, and, you know, typically that's going to fill most of those twelve. And then oftentimes, I have a client move someone out of one of the other groups, which is, you know, fine, because you know what you're looking for. Next slide. So evaluation and semifinalist candidates and a selection of finalists. So this next step, we really find out who's a serious candidate, because we ask them to do some work for us. We asked them to complete some written questionnaires. We also asked them to do a recorded online video interview, and you all help us select the questions for for those. I'll send you a sample, a list of questions, and then you help craft those, maybe edit those, and send ten questions for the written and for the recorded. And then we'll do what's called a stage one media search. And so this is pretty extensive, even the stage one. We go back two years and look at all of the newspaper media about each of the candidates. And if we identify any red flags, we'll be sure to share those with the council so that you have that information early on, and there's no surprises. We really want to make sure that there are no surprises throughout the process. And so you will then select the finalists from that information, and that's when we start scheduling onsite interviews. Next slide. But before you do, we also ask them to complete, well, we'll complete a background investigation. We can ask them to do what's called a DISC or IOP assessment, which is basically personality profile, their approach to management, their management behavior, so, so forth. And that's optional. You don't have to do that. It is, there is an extra cost. We also like to ask them to do a first-year plan to see how they approach their work and how much research they've done on the community. And it's, it can be quite an eye-opener in terms of the contrast between candidates. And then we do that first bullet there, that stage two media search, which is beyond just newspaper and social media and all sorts of data. And if, you know, if you've been a city manager or, you know, you're a senior manager in government, there could be, you know, hundreds of pages on a candidate. So we'll provide that information, but we'll also go through it ourselves, obviously, and point out anything that we might see. Again, so that you, you know, you know, you know what you're hiring, you know what you're getting. Next slide. Okay, now, the interview process, you help, you design that, and I help you do that, and I'll give you lots of different options and matrices on how to get this done. I have done it all sorts of ways, multiple days, one day, community involvement, staff involvement, panels, assessment panels. We can just do a number of different things here. And then reference checks, we do that as well. We have a software system that, that does that electronically, that's incredibly efficient at it. And you'll get a lot of great data on references as well. Next slide. So after you get through that interview process and you decide you, you know, want to make it offer to a particular candidate, and, you know, sometimes there's a, there's another step in between where the council may want to invite two back, so to speak, or not just the five finalists from the twelve, but maybe two individuals, which is fine. But once you narrow it down to a candidate that you all want to make an offer to, then I can step in and help be the go-between and, and help negotiate an agreement. We can also do press releases if you desire, and we do satisfaction surveys, and then we do post-hire team building as well. Next slide. Okay, back to you, JJ.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Over our twenty-two years in executive recruitment, we've developed an understanding that there are five keys to a successful search, and that starts with a comprehensive understanding of the unique culture, needs, and desires of the organization and community, followed by dynamic state-of-the-art talent marketing that reaches a national candidate pool in a way that engages and makes them interested in the opportunity. We also pride ourselves, as Mark mentioned, on candidate vetting that prevents surprises and ensures in-depth understanding of who candidates are, as well as ensuring candidates' understanding of the organization and community to prevent withdrawals late in the process and to help ensure a successful conclusion. Finally, a process that is seamless and smooth and user-friendly for both candidates and you as the client. So why SGR? As you will know in our proposal, up to two trips by the recruiter are included in our not-to-exceed pricing. We believe these onsite visits are an important and invaluable piece of the process. I would also like to draw your attention to our eighteen-month service guarantee. If your selected candidate leaves the organization within eighteen months of hire, we will redo the search for no additional professional fee one additional time and charge only for expenses as indicated in our proposal. We believe there are at least three keys that set us apart from other firms. First, as I mentioned earlier, our team is made up of experienced public servants who have firsthand knowledge and experience in local government. We know and understand local government and the challenges and opportunities you face on a daily basis. Second, because of our local government experience and connections, we have been able to curate the network that Mark mentioned of over forty-seven thousand opt-in subscribers to our weekly e-newsletter who want to know what SGR has to say and what we're doing to help local governments to meet the needs of their communities. Additionally, we have over six thousand people who have requested to be notified of our searches for city and county managers and administrators. We send those out in forms of job alerts. Third, any search firm can get you candidates. We work hard to spend significant time at the front end of the process to make sure we have an in-depth understanding of your organization's culture, priorities, and needs so we can find and bring you the candidates that will be the best match for your organization and community. We're very proud of a number of partnerships we have with organizations that exist to promote diversity and inclusion, including the League of Women in Government, the Local Government Hispanic Network, and the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. Since two thousand sixteen, twenty-two percent of the candidates we have placed are female, and seventeen percent indicated they are a person of color. This concludes our presentation, and we're more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, JJ. Council members, questions that you have for, for them, and that's really. You got one?
The point I'd like to make is that one of the things that really drew me to SGR was the idea that they were a government searching entity. There are lots of recruiting agencies, but they really are focused on government recruiting positions. And the other thing was that they have a timeline that they put together so that you can look at when you can anticipate each element of the process occurring in such a way that you could anticipate that if you started the process tomorrow, you could potentially be done with the entire process by, well, at this point, maybe second week of January.
Yeah, it's like sixteen weeks. I think it's fifteen to sixteen weeks.
I, yeah, I was thinking it was more like twelve, but it's along those lines. So you can see that they have. Right, no, I, and I, the, my notes are a little cold because I haven't looked down carefully today. But when I first saw their proposal for the lead bourbon cities, that's part of the journey to them, or those two factors.
Even though it's, yeah, I heard the mics on. I think it's hard to get to the, the. So my question is, I heard a lot about, a lot of your strengths. So I'm looking for, out of all those things of why the council should choose you, what is your number one? If there was one thing you would tell counselors on why your company should be picked, what would that be?
JJ, you want to go first?
Oh goodness. Well, I can tell you, before I joined the SGR team, I had the opportunity to work with, you know, we didn't use a lot of search firms. Times have changed a lot over the years, and the levels of positions that organizations are finding that they're needing to use search firms has definitely grown. But in my twenty-two-plus years at Clackamas County, I think we used a search firm about three times. So I had the opportunity to work with three different firms, and I can tell you, while they all had some very good strengths and I think generated more and better quality candidates than we could have on our own, I saw a significant difference from the client side before I joined the SGR team in the level of service, the availability. You know, Mark is often messaging me late at night, so I know he is very readily available to his clients, and you will never have to worry about, you know, waiting for a significant amount of time before you're going to hear back from him if you've got a question or a concern to work through. So I guess that's where I'd start. Mark, I'll let you add.
Yeah, great question, Mayor. Thank you for that. And it's hard because there's so much, but you have a lot of information in front of you, so I'll just highlight a couple of things. Number one is our reach. There's no firm that's got the reach that we do. And, and it's, it's not just, you know, putting something out there, and it's personal. There's lots of relationships. Our CEO and founder does nothing but client relationships, traveling all over the United States. And so that reach is also, you'll see it through other services. So we have a very large arm of the company that does training, city council retreats. I also do executive coaching. We do a lot of other things besides recruiting that lead to other things. And so we're really comprehensive in that regard, and I think what the counselors said in terms of, you know, we're, we're local government-focused recruit and recruiting. That's what we do. And so it's not nonprofits and other things. It's primarily local government.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate it. Counselors, are there any other questions?
Thank you. Of the two onsite visits that you mentioned that you would do, what are the two times that you feel it's important for you to be onsite? What would you specifically be doing during, during those two visits?
Yeah, I'll take that question. So sometimes it'll be three, and the client wants to pay for that third visit, but two is, is absolutely sufficient. Usually, the two that I come on are the initial visit where I'm doing the recruitment profile so that I get a really good understanding of the community on, you know, boots on the ground, and I can meet with as many people as possible. And then it varies that the triage for the selection of the semifinalists and the triage for the selection of the finalists when I meet with the council, those would be virtual. Now, sometimes clients want me to come during that triage, that first triage, and we skip that initial visit. And so then I'm just there for the triage of the semifinalists, and then again, at the very end, to help orchestrate the interview process.
So, Mark, you were froze for part of it. So we only heard the one visit, the first one, and then what the possibility for a third one was, but not your second visit. So we don't know what that is. Could you repeat that for us?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So typically, it's at the front end with development of the recruitment profile, or when we, I present the, all the, the entire pool of candidates and you, and you're selecting the semifinalists. And it's always at the very end when we're actually conducting interviews. At the very end, when we're conducting interviews. So that would be three.
Yes, Karen.
Well, I see in your proposal, I'm sorry, my name's Karen Pedersen, City Manager. I see in your proposal that you are saying that to two and a half days visits. So I guess I'm trying to still figure out in two and a half days, you're, if you come once in the beginning, then and you're now talking about three days. So if you come once in the beginning, once when we do the interviews, and then I, I'm going to range to an hour base.
Yeah, so what I was, what I was saying is that clients will pick two of the three, but, but not all three, unless they want to pay extra just for the travel. There's not any additional professional fee. It's just the actual expensive travel. But we build in the two, and then you pick which two you want me to attend.
And so when, when it gets down to interviewing the, I was going to call them contestants, but that's candidates, I guess, is the correct word, then we will do most of that on, like a virtual, like this on Zoom or something.
You can. But what I'm, especially during COVID, that's what was happening, recorded videos for the selection of the, the finalists. Okay? So that will be along with the questionnaires to select the finalists. So those, that's a self-paced video where they, they, they get a question and they respond to the question. They got four minutes for each question. And then I send all those videos to you in links so that you can look at them at your convenience. Then the actual interview of the finalists, we are seeing face to face. Now, if you wanted to do those virtually, we could do that as well. But most all the time now, we see people coming onsite for the, the finalist interviews, and usually that's around five candidates.
I'm sorry, Mark, you were kind of freezing a little bit there. So I think just to clarify, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Karen, were you asking about the onsite visits for Mark as opposed to the candidates?
Well, I was just trying to figure out, yes, when, how often you were going to come, if, right, the candidates, what day they were going to come, if that's day two or three in your proposal.
Right. So, so typically, for the first visit, you know, that can be up to two and a half days for Mark to be, you know, talking with whoever you'd like to have him speak with in addition to, you know, talking with whoever you'd like to have him speak with, um, in addition to, you know, um, the council. You know, I know um, from a conversation I've had with him that when he did the Kenabunk um, search, he spent time walking the streets and talking to citizens and getting input from them and just getting a feel for the community, what they were looking for, what was important to them. Um, so those are some of the things that he'd be doing on that first visit for up to two and a half days. And then um, like he said, a lot of times we'll do that middle visit where you're selecting the final candidates virtually um, in a Zoom meeting like this. But what he was saying is, you know, you do have the option, if you want him onsite to do that, um, he could either, you know, skip that first visit and come during that time period, or that could be an additional visit if you wanted to do that um, above what's included in the not to exceed price. And then for the onsite interviews, you know, typically Mark's arriving about the same time as the finalists are so that he can be there to greet them, make sure that, you know, um, he's getting them acclimated and everything and he's there for the entire process of the interviews. Um, up until, you know, sometimes organizations like us to help with um, negotiating the job offer and those types of things. So he'd be onsite for the entire duration of, of whatever that finalist process looks like. Does that help clarify?
Yes, because, but I, I'm, okay, so now my question's going to be, so if he uses, in your quote, it says two and a half days. So if you use the two and a half days on the first visit, then I, if I want him to come again to finish up the process, I pay for another two and a half days?
No, no, ea- each of the two visits is up to two and a half days each. So sometimes we'll have clients, for example, I think Mark, uh, when he did the Fort Collins search, must, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you had, they wanted a lot of citizen engagement, a lot of different meetings. And so I think Mark ended up staying additional days. So if he were to stay more than two and a half days at the beginning, there would be an additional cost for that. But generally, most of our clients find that, you know, that two and a half days for the first visit and the two and a half days for the second is sufficient.
Okay, that's the answer to my question. Thank you.
Be back.
Thanks, Karen. Any other questions that we have for, for this company? Having hearing none, I think that's everything. We appreciate your time and your information. I, I would imagine that um, once that decision is made, uh, you would be told the air name.
Thank you very much.
But we would definitely let you know.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we know if WCP, WBCT is on? Oh, what, what is her name?
Wendy.
Wendy?
Yes.
Hi Wendy, welcome. You, you are on.
All right, I'm assuming I can go ahead and share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll get the presentation going. I'm assuming you can see that.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for the invitation. We're excited to connect with you today and talk. So I'm going to spend the next five minutes going through just a quick history of who we are. Um, and then kind of walk through the process a little more detail. Um, after the presentation, uh, the main, main part of this presentation is really just get a sense of our history and what we do. Uh, so WBCP is an HR consulting and executive search firm. Uh, we've been in business for eighteen years. We're based out of Southern Oregon with um, other offices in Washington and California. Um, we're currently in six different states right now as far as services that we offer or clients that we have. Um, you can see a big concentration in California because that's where I started my career. Um, I grew up in the South Bay area in California, uh, ended up working at the county of Santa Barbara in Southern California, working in the CEO Human Resource Department. Kind of morphed my career into an internal consultant role, doing all things recruiting and working across twenty-five decentralized departments and um, a county size of seventeen thousand employees, working on all different kinds of recruitments, not only department head recruitments, but mid-level management and uh, individual contributor recruitments. I took that uh, into my own business in two thousand and four. And today we have almost, almost twenty staff. Uh, seventeen of those are dedicated into, on the recruitment side. So we have recruitment teams, uh, myself, I have two other recruiters. We have about five persons behind us and each of those teams is, as well as additional support staff. I have a dedicated headhunter. Um, I have a project manager and then several support staff that work with us as well as a marketing communications director that does our social media and our brochure. So that's a quick review of who we are. Um, I'll talk a little bit about our Oregon. I've actually lived in Oregon for twenty years as an Orange County employee. I was one out of seventeen employee, seventeen thousand employees that actually was uh, that chose to leave the state and they wanted me to work for them anyways. So um, when they wanted me to report back to California, when I had a new boss, I said, I can't do that. I I moved to Southern Oregon for family reasons. So that's when I started my business in two thousand and four. So I've actually been in Southern Oregon because my network is in California. That's where we really developed our business. Um, just a quick review of our process. You know, I, I think that uh, what, what you get with WBCP is we are really dedicated partners. We tend to see ourselves as an extension of your organization. The first part of the recruitment process is really our kickoff meeting where we connect with you and find out what you're looking for in an ideal candidate, but also identifying what the framework of the recruitment is going to look like. Every culture, every client and every community is different. So we'll come forward with some, some ideas and recommendations on what that process should look like. That typically includes a stakeholder engagement process that includes potential, usually for this kind of position, it will include a community survey, likely a community meeting, but that could be different for different clients. Also, uh, an employee survey as well as um, various employee meetings, maybe with executive leadership and others that have been identified by the um, client, but we'll also be looking for um, a group of stakeholders in your community that you think would be important for us to talk to, to help us identify not only the ideal candidate, but also create an inclusive and engaging process. We can invite everybody to an interviewing process and neither, and our clients sometimes don't want that. We do encourage an inclusive interviewing process, process, if culture and uh, if culture it can allow and there's an interest from our client, we'll get those panels together that are also very inclusive. But again, it can only include so many people so that engagement stakeholder process is really important. So that's really the big bulk of the beginning. It also identifies the core competencies we're looking for in an ideal candidate. We'll create the marketing material from there to be able to really put that out there. It's um, it's one to help I identify candidates that we're looking for, but also help our candidates recognize what's great about your organization. So um, that usually brings in a very broad applicant pool. We'll screen those applicants and then we connect with about, usually is on average about twenty-five percent of the applicant pool that I actually conduct um, to usually for these positions or Zoom meetings um, to not only identify that, you know, confirm their technical expertise, but really start to do the matchmaking of those interpersonal strengths. It's very rare these days that people who are highly, highly technically capable don't work out. Uh, it's, it's very rare that individuals that, that don't work out for organizations. It's very rare that it's because they aren't technically capable. It's usually those leadership, communication, collaborate, collaboration and other core competencies that are um, lacking. So it really helps us identify where those strengths are in the areas that our clients that they're looking for. We also go into um, I'll take all of that information and go into what we call a shortlist meeting where we present those candidates to you. Um, usually that's a it's usually a group of twice as many people as you'll actually invite to interview. When you interview, it's usually not more than seven. And um, and then we'll have, usually have those in a group of like A and B candidates and maybe some mentionables that we need to make sure that you're familiar with. We'll give you as much access as you need to. In the process, we have an applicant tracking pool that we are, app, applicant tracking system that we can share with our clients as well. So that all takes us down to the final process, which is interviews and at that stakeholder engagement meeting, we'll have uh, put the framework together and have coordinated all those inter, those interview panels for you. Everybody will have um, their calendars reserved way in advance. So we'll be coordinating all of that for you as well. And then also facilitate those panel interviews. So that's just a quick, uh, as well, the final part is the background reference checks. I shouldn't pass that up. Uh, we have a investigator on our team that does the background reference checks. He has over thirty years of experience. Um, I retired as a police chief, but came up through investigations and now has um, now does employee investigations, but also does all of our reference checks. So we do a three sixty reference checks, people who have reported to them, people they've reported to, and then also for this position really be really important to capture who, you know, relationships they have to decide whether that be, it's typically, for this position will be typically community partners. So um, we do the reference checks and the background is very um, robust as well. We also can do investigative backgrounds where we actually have our investigator go out to the communities where they've lived to do a deeper dive with today's technology and avail, and access and availability to information. Those are less common these days, but we do offer that as an additional service. So with us, we, you really get an HR partner. Um, uh, we, we, our clients, HR partners love us because we take all the burden off of them and really um, take on the details um, as much as they need us to. Uh, we provide additional services as I just mess, mentioned, those investigative services. Other than the investigative services, everything that I offered in that those six phases, um, that all becomes part, that is all included in this package. In addition to a twenty-four month guarantee, if this person were to leave for any reason, we will redo the recruitment for only additional expenses. I think that what we're, what you get with us is you get a, um, you get a lot of, you get you get a recruitment team that um, you can trust. Um, you can trust that we know how to connect with your community, with your staff and know how to support you throughout the process. So just to give you a quick uh, review of recent recruitments we've done in the city, in state of Oregon, um, is the city of Independence, their city manager, city of Gold Hill, we're conducting that right now, city of Phoenix in Oregon. Um, the city of Duval, it shouldn't say Oregon, I apologize. I fixed that earlier. I don't know whether to take, that's Duval, Washington. We just are in the pro, final phases of that. And then the city administrator for the city of um, Rogue River in Oregon. What you'll see with our brochures, if you take a look at our job board on our website is um, my, my background before I got into recruiting for public sector was in marketing and branding. So really taking that into the recruiting world, it's really, I think, what separates us from our competition is the fact that we know how to target an audience and and make our marketing materials really attractive. So people want to apply for the positions. So this is just an example of some of the recruitment brochures that we've done to give you an idea of why, why people want to read our brochures and consider themselves in these positions. So that's a quick overview of our marketing, but I'll go into some more details. I'm sure you'll have some more questions. But as far as our advertising strategy, um, I'm a good uh, I'm a good steward of taxpayer dollars. It's really important for me to be able to really think about who we're trying to target and where. Uh, we have a good stretch. We are LinkedIn recruiters. All of our recruiters have their own recruiter seats, so we can reach out to those over three hundred and fifty million profiles out there, but also there's several associations in Oregon, Washington and California and other states where we can reach people who are already doing this job. If, and we also, we do both, we'll pull a list from those associations as well as reach out on Indeed and LinkedIn. We also have um, other places that will post NFBA, um, diversity jobs, um, ICMA, League of Oregon Cities, um, public CEO, you can see some of the stretches that we have here, uh, careers in government and so forth. We also have a social media coordinator on our team that does the social media for these positions as well. And um, we'll also do direct mail. So the other thing we have is a relationship with a um, organization that um, reaches all over six hundred diversity job boards as well as over twenty thousand local community organizations such as NAACP and other diversity associations that they have a relationship with. So they can, they scrape our website every day to reach out to those associations and those websites and we get reports back on those as well. We have really great success um, with regards to our diversity and outreach. Over sixty percent of our applicants um, come from an either ethnic or gender diverse applicant pool. And over fifty, and fifty-six percent of our candidates that are, they're placed in leadership positions with WBCP clients come from those diverse applicant pools. All right, I'd like to open it up to the questions.
Right, City Council, Council members, do you have any questions for Wendy? All right, I'll ask the same question I asked the, the previous company. Out of all the things that you shared with us about the positives of going with your company, what would be uh, one reason why we should choose your company over somebody else?
Uh, so to be fair, I did have a minute to think about this longer than my competition. So thank you for that. Um, but I, I had to think about that for a minute and I have a, had a lot that flooded through my mind. I would say that's because I care. Um, and not only my, that's, that's not just me, but all of our recruiters here really care about our clients' experience. So.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that has another, a question for Wendy? Having hearing none, I thank you for your time. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Oh. Actually, uh,
If nobody has a question from the city council, I have one. Uh, I do you have a timeline in mind? I didn't present one here with your, so if, what is your timeline for doing a project like this?
Yes, uh, did you get our, do you have our proposal?
I have, no, I think.
No, I didn't think we would have a proposal.
No, I don't think I have a proposal. I think I have just what you just now presented.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, we did put a proposal together. Would that be helpful for you to have?
They have one, I'll just get it.
Okay. Um, so it's a, typically it's twelve, yeah, typically it's twelve weeks from the time that we open a recruitment. So um, stakeholder engagement can extend that a little bit more. That's including us um, a, a week of stakeholder engagement for city administrator, city manager positions. That can take, that sometimes can stretch out depending on our clients' needs. So so I think to be safe, it'd be twelve to sixteen weeks, um, depending on what that looks like, the framework that we put together.
Is there any other questions? Karen, do you have any more questions?
No, if you have a proposal for them all.
As you said, you had a proposal on the last packet.
I believe it's in our references packet.
Last, for the last one. Okay, so yeah, they say we do, it was in the last one. I don't recall seeing that proposal.
Yeah, in there you'll see a timeframe for us. You'll see a suggested timeframe in that proposal.
That's as easy as just going to the last meeting notes and opening up what we discussed. So I think that would be sufficient. All right. Well, thank you, Wendy. We'll definitely give you, give you a blast and let you know our decision one way or the other.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
So now we probably need to deliberate and figure out which company we would like to go with or decide neither company. I think those would be our two options that we would get to choose. I would like to see, look at the, the timeline. I know it's going to be fairly similar. Because I remember seeing only SGRs. Fifteen, yeah, so I said fifteen, sixteen. You were probably thinking it was the. You were probably thinking it was the. So I guess my biggest thing I would like to know is, no, also some harder questions, but. So the committee, I would imagine that the committee would have a lot of input on which company, because it had a lot of contact, which company they would recommend. I like, WVCP presents a lot of good things because they're, I was working in California. SGR provided a lot because it appeared to be nationwide. And WVCP is based in Oregon. SGR is, has a whole, maybe a bunch of satellites based out of Texas. So I guess I would like to have some input from the committee team on who they think and why.
So Mayor, if I could clarify one of the things that SGR has, for example, is they're doing recruitment in our neighborhood, if you will, Kennehan, Walla Walla, Richland, excuse me, Richland, Walla Walla, in this area. And they're also, while they are nationwide, they're more spread evenly. Whereas WVCP is primarily in California. So the bulk of their work is in California, they have maybe five, we'll contract now or five things important in two months. So I thought SGR was broader, closer to home for us.
The whole committee? I was also trying to sift through my, my paperwork. The mayor's note is, is valid. For similar sets of reasons, I'm leaning towards SGR as well. I just appreciate the relevance that they present and the experience as well.
Thank you, this is Leslie Pearson, City Councilor. I, based on the information that was provided and over the weeks of review, it, I felt that SGR's presentation and their scope of materials, as well as their depth of experience, focus on local government, made my option lean towards that. The fact that they're also working here locally, like being a council extension. And then they're also actively involved with League of Oregon Cities, and they're executive director recruitment at the moment. Just really solidify their credibility and their depth of experience.
Anybody else have any questions? So this question probably is not going to be fair for Martha, since she's a budget person. So I guess we need to decide where we are on our budget. I mean, I, I think it's inappropriate for me to say, Martha, can we hire a firm tonight? And have you choose J or A unless you owe you a day.
Um, we did have, we kind of anticipated that we would be having to hire for a city manager. And so we did have in the budget money set aside for those type of expenses, whether it's a recruiting firm or not. I'd have to look back to see what the exact amount that we budgeted was. But I know it's definitely more than twenty-five thousand, it may be even up to fifty that I have in that category. But I need to double check to get the exact figure.
Thank you, sorry to push you on the spot. Anybody else have anything to say? Yes?
On the W. VC.
WVCB.
The second presentation. I didn't hear where she said that they were coming to, or meant to put boots on the ground, to visit the community, to see where they want it, because I think that's important. When we are choosing a city manager, we need to have a city manager that is going to care about our community. I can't leave first the presentation just too.
Can I ask, do, do you, in particular the two new councillors, have the proposal from the last company? See that? Neither do I, so.
And I just brought my packet from the last meeting and it's not in there either.
Yes, so I'm thinking.
Yes?
That information was provided in the list of references that we sent prior to our last meeting. The portfolio that was submitted to the city separately, I believe it was sent to you all also with a note in the references list. And the exact documents were available upon request. It has been provided, just wasn't included in the packet the other night, because we have time to reserve everything for the future.
But I think the point was the new councillors don't have it.
Perhaps if they haven't requested it on board, if it wasn't provided.
You know, when, because you just got their email.
Today, this morning.
Yeah, that's, that, that was, that, I guess, that would be, that's the concern that she shared.
That's my concern, is that if Heather hasn't seen the total proposal, she probably doesn't have it.
Isaac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did see that I just spoke and that the email that was considering, it was a thumb drive of our reference material that was given to City Recorder Jan before the presentation was submitted as well.
No, I was just, I was just basing my, my comments based on what the presentation, what the presentation was today.
So I guess my question, and it's gonna put the, the new councillors on the spot. And I, I apologize. But do you feel that you are adequately prepared to be able to make a decision tonight? And I know that puts you on the spot, but I, I just think that's fair.
Based on the notes that I took as they were giving the presentation and then the brochure that I reviewed as well, for me, similar to a job interview, is I'm really looking at who has the most experience and would be able to do the job that would need them to do. And when I look at my notes, when we're looking at hiring a city manager, I feel like SGR did come across as being more knowledgeable. And some of the very specific items that they touched on during the presentation really spoke to, they know what they're doing. And so, you know, we might be placed on the spot. But I know the timeline, the timeline have more specifics of the breakdown of the week by week. But I feel like in the presentation, they really broke down the different, not necessarily the timeline that they would follow, but really the different aspects that they feel are important in order to find those candidates that we, we need.
Thank you.
And then that's what I was basing on as well. The presentation today I took to be like an interview where we asked questions and they provided the presentation. And I just felt that SGR provided a lot more information for us to consider today.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you for your comments.
So would we do a nomination at this point?
I think it would be a motion, I think, I think I, that would be, you're looking for a motion.
So I'd like to move that we hire SGR as our ready for, for the city, the city manager position.
Okay, I got a motion and I got a second. Is there any discussion? Anybody who'd like to discuss anything before we take a vote? All right, Jackie, would you like, would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly will. Start with Councilor Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Baumpartner?
Yes.
Councilor Prophet?
Yes.
Councilor Drago?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Quetta?
Yes.
Counselor Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Kiefer?
Yes. So we, we will accept SGR as our company that we will go with in our candidate search.
So I wonder, do we need to have a discussion about who are the next steps SGR would need to be? Does the committee need to coordinate with Mark and JJ and find a time with the city staff about when we could have them be here, who's on the ground to start that process?
I was actually kind of thinking about that on, who, who do we want to do that? Do we, and my thought was, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong or, but I was like, do we have the committee do, do that, or do we create a liaison like Karen? Be able to do that piece because she directly works with the city. As being able to coordinate that, that's what I'd like for discussion. If that's clear, as much as where I'm trying to go, for the thought process.
I, I think we're probably gonna need both. My personal take is that the committee needs to be involved in a portion of it. But we also think we need to have Karen involved as well with helping coordinate stakeholders, find those people that would be critical to answer some of those questions for SGR. Really set up the story of Boardman and who we are, why does it take that? And then be able to, to make that a coordinate effort. Thing has to be either or, can we vote, cancel?
That's kind of what I was trying to get to the discussion, what we can get for, what we want. Because in my mind, the committee has done what we asked them to do. So they did a great job, and that's in the second part for us talking about that. But my, my thought was struggling with, if we're gonna keep the committee, what would be the next? I don't want to answer it all crazy, but what would be the, if we were gonna keep the committee on what we would like them to do next? And if we want to keep the committee and work with Karen, I have no problem with that. But I just wanted to have a discussion on maybe what we wanted to, the direction we wanted to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with SGR still on the phone, perhaps they could provide some input as to whether they scheme works well.
I guess that would be, I think I see JJ, is JJ still there?
I am, and I think Mark is too.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed what the question was.
Oh, you're, you're on.
Hi, JJ, this is Leslie Pearson, City Councilor. We are discussing what our next steps would be and interacting with you and in your experience. And if the committee members work with the current city manager and with you and what your input might be for what works well for the next step.
Absolutely, I'm gonna let Mark take that because it, it can work a number of different ways with different organizations. But Mark, I'll, I'll let you give your thoughts.
Yeah, I think it works well both ways. The mayor's right, though, I think just to have a very specific charge to the committee about what their role is. And of course, if I come onsite or, or virtually, I'll be talking to each council member, not just the committee. So, you know, it's just such an important decision to have everybody involved and, and good communications, right? With everybody, so everybody's hearing the same thing. So, you know, if you want to delegate some of the logistics with the committee, that's fine. If you want to delegate it to a staff member who then represents the council and, and is kind of sharing information. Or I oftentimes, like with Kennebunk, I communicate with the entire council. So it just depends on what your preference is, I can do it any of those ways. It does help if there's one point of contact, though, I will, I will say that. Because I'd be seeing a lot of information and wanting feedback pretty quickly. And then if I have any, run into any trouble, as far as, you know, can't identify something that's sent or didn't receive something, then I've got one go-to person for that. So that would be my feedback.
Thank you very much, I was, and that's kind of where I was going at, is to be able to have a point of contact. And if we choose to, and to have, if we wanted to have the committee as well, that would be able to, I, I think that might be a good idea, especially if we wanted to get input for whatever reason. So I, I really think that the city manager would be a good contact as far as being able to get something from your company and then be able to also have communication with the committee. I feel like I just dictated and I don't want, I don't want to feel like that.
I, I mean, I, first off, I didn't have the need to speak because I felt like that was a real set, just so you know. And I saw you looking for other people and I agree with having a one point of contact. And, you know, if it makes the council feel comfortable to have the committee included, then absolutely, I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that as well. I, I do feel like the, what we've been charged to do is done. And I also hear at, at this point that he's gonna be talking to all of us. So, you know, it sounds like he's, you know, Mark, excuse me, referencing my name. Is gonna be making sure that nothing gets kind of dropped from the cracks if he's not hearing back, which I don't see any reason why. He wouldn't, you know, hear back probably on things, then he would be reaching out probably to other avenues. But I, I feel like what the mayor said was said very well. And majority of the council, whatever they feel, I'm happy to agree. Because I feel like we're on very good standing and conversation.
Thank you. So what's our pleasure, whatever you think is? Are we, do we agree with? Because I, I'm thinking that there might be a couple of things that we could probably assign as a duty or a direction for the committee if there's something else. And if at the end of this meeting we find out that there really isn't, then maybe we can discuss whether we need the committee or not.
Sure.
Is where I, I'm at.
Mayor, if I might, and just a few, a few items that a committee will come in handy if you want to use a committee is, number one, finalizing the brochure. Oftentimes, though, the whole council wants to weigh in on that, which I understand. Number two would be selecting the interview questions for the online interview as well as the written questionnaire. And then number three would be, what does the interview process look like? And it doesn't mean the committee's deciding that. That they're basically just coming to you with the full counsel, they did with the selection of the firm. So those, those are the three most common areas that I see a committee involved.
Thank you, and I personally kind of like that, that would give the. committee a charge of three specific things to do, and I think that would be appropriate. And I, that's kind of where I was trying to get at. Is if we keep the committee, then we can give them a charge so they know exactly what they're doing in their direction. Okay?
Councilor Drago has a question.
Councilor Drago, you have the floor.
Thank you. I was just, uh, wanted to put my input in. I think that, uh, having the committee, if they are so inclined to continue and having Karen be their point of contact since she's there available every day and they can work together, I am all for that.
Thank you, Junior. Uh, Leslie Pearson. Okay, uh, I'll go with you next. Brenda?
So I was, I pushed my button when Mark was talking, but I was thinking there's also that long list of the applications to filter through. And to get down to a ten or twelve, and so that might involve some committee work also.
So you're saying, I hope you're not saying that you want to be a part of the one to limit the candidate pool.
I think that that was one of the things that we talked about, they, they talked about, like if they had eighty-seven candidates or something, they're not going to present eighty-seven candidates. They're, they're gonna have those applications, there would be some.
I just.
And then there would be some restricting and pulling it down to ten, twelve people.
They would have that, correct?
Yes.
Yes, they would have, I just don't, it just came across that the committee would be part of that and I don't.
Anyway, I was thinking about that when he was talking about.
I see.
Um, no longer need, I'm sorry, I forgot any button, but a question.
Councilor Quetis, I forgot your first name. Christina?
I did that one, really calling for us. So, um, I do, I just wanna say I do agree with the, uh, one contacts with, um, Karen, um, helping and, um, I don't quite agree with, with the rest as far as the committee. And if you, if we do go that route, I, I just wanna make a comment about it. Um, cause I do feel like it's important for all of us to have a statement versus giving it to just a certain number of members. The task of doing that and based on the last meeting, um, where they did a lot of work and then the, when they were researching the, the different, um, companies. And then it was seen as though they were just fishing only one agency. Um, and then we had to go back and say, well, no, give us a couple of options. And I, I don't want it to happen again where they can be working on a brochure and say, here's what we really like. And then for us to come back and say, well, no, why don't you just pick that one and come back and bring us with a couple? Cause I feel like that's just gonna delay the process. And we're already on a very strict timeline.
Thank you, thank you. Councilor Pearson?
Um, I think part of the committee's tasks were to do the work and do all the labor and the immense research and then come to with options and present. And by no means are we trying to force anyone saying that with one group. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide multiple options. I think our quarter, that's absolutely reasonable. I, I do have some concerns. I think that the committee and or other members, perhaps at this point, it can, it grows where some time ago, we had discussed the idea of involving other stakeholders in our commu- community to have feedback in the process and not just limited to the committee, the, the three people thus far. I, I would like to see more people involved and I would like to see, um, let me back up just really briefly too. If we're in a new form of hiring a recruitment agency, I think at, at this point, we turn this job over to them and let them do their job. And then they provide information to us and then we have the opportunity to disseminate it, discuss it and then provide the input that they reiterated, having a collaborative partnership with all of, all of us, all of the stakeholders involved throughout the entire process. Um, I, I am a little concerned about just who the one point of contact would be. And I think that the committee members should be involved, um, at least copied on those conversations and correspondence with whom ever the main point of contact may be.
So am I hearing correctly, just for clarification, that SDR should be the lead contact? Is that correct? The, the lead director to direct the thing. And then we should have a point of contact. Which, which would be Karen.
I don't know if Karen is the best option.
Why not?
Well, I, I don't wanna run into any additional concerns that you've seen in the past where there might be any gray area that and I'm just gonna say what I've heard from citizen members or members of our community that the city manager can't hire the city manager. And I don't wanna put anyone at risk of being accused of that. I don't, and it has nothing to do with anything personal. It's just strictly objective. I want everything to be very clear where nobody is accusing Karen or anybody else of not following the rule. So I'm, I'm just trying to think objectively and like worst case scenario and how can we protect everybody involved? So that we're not running into this circumstance again where anybody's accusing any one of us of not being transparent or, or any other false accusation.
So the alternative would be three members of the committee?
I, I don't necessarily have an answer for that. I'm just trying to think of what are the unforeseen consequences that we should consider while making this decision? And I don't know if I would think I would defer again to SGR as to what, um, in their experience, if they're hiring a city manager, do they use the current city manager as their point of contact? And what are the pros and cons of doing that?
Yes.
So usually. I'm sorry. I understand, um, your concern and also hearing from the citizens, transparency seems to be a huge, um, word that's being thrown around a lot. So maybe have a combination, as you had mentioned earlier, have Karen the point of contact, but also have one or two committee members also CC on that email. That way you have three, two or three people that can respond quickly. And then you have that, that transparency that everyone's looking for.
Mark? You have the floor.
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, typically I'm working with the HR director. And, you know, it's for all the reasons why you all just described, but I've, I've also worked with the current, um, retiring town manager, so, um, yeah, it, it's really up to the community, but I think if you were to do what you all are describing as far as a staff member and a committee member or two, that works, that'll work just fine.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? I think if we are gonna make go in the direction of, I think we would need a motion. I think we need to get that out, I would imagine.
You know, um, I don't know that you're really gonna take an action so much as a consensus. You already agreed to go with a firm. You're just trying to figure out how we're gonna do this now. So if you have a consensus by the council, I think that would be enough. I don't believe you need to make a motion. It's not an additional action you take.
I appreciate that input. Um, so how, how would you suggest, just like?
Do we have consensus?
Consensus?
Do we have consensus? Everybody agree that Karen would be the point of contact, CC, the,
Three members of the committee, three members of the committee.
Committee, aren't we?
I'm good with that.
Do we have consensus of that or no? If we don't, then we should take a vote.
And what did you, what did you draw it for?
You'll be able to do it in public comment after.
Okay, nevermind.
Sorry.
It did say in the agenda that last time we discussed, especially meaning you would allow public comment during the, this part.
Yeah, the public comment came that it will be after all of stuff and then, yeah, sorry. So I lost my thought.
You have to do that, you have consensus or not.
We're not, how, how do you feel?
I, if, if it's either Karen or HR, what I'm comfortable with either. I was, my face looks conflicted. I'm just mulling all of this over in my head hearing what everyone's saying, so. Um, but where we're at right now, if it's Karen or with the, uh, committee members, uh, included, then sure, absolutely. I'm happy with that.
What, what are you feeling, Heather?
Um, I feel that in the best interest of the city staff as well as the city council and our community, I believe that the, that Karen and one or two of the city council members should work together as a team, um, to move forward with this process.
Brenda, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think I said at the beginning, I'd like to see the committee and Karen working together.
And I think Councilor Drago said he was thinking, uh, the same thing with, I agree, he answered that. Councilor Quetis?
I, I also agree. Um, like I said, um, with, with, um, we were talking about just the point of contact. But I do think that, um, and having CC, um, a couple of the committee members, I don't even remember that. Um, I do still feel like more people would want to be involved than just the committee.
And, uh, Councilor, uh, Pearson?
I'm, I'm good with that. With Karen and then members of the committee, um, copy on that, so. Can we just forward, um, not for discussion, not for, um, any of that, but just forward, um, progress notes, like a weekly progress notes on, to the entire council?
Would that be?
Do you need that or help? Christine?
I'll go ahead.
So I don't remember, I was sitting in council room, Leslie. Um, I think once we do get started with, um, SDR and they give us, um, that direction, um, and, um, I, I think that we'll know more so and, and maybe everybody needs to be included. Um, and, and again, I don't see it just being committee and Karen. Um, I think for the point of contact, um, that makes sense, you know, for, for the agency, for SDR to, to have that, really that one, make sure who gives out to everybody else that are not sending emails, you know, um, that he's not having a search for all different, you know, people. That makes sense to me. The rest, I think will come once we get started with SDR.
Thank you. Councilor Drago?
Yeah, I would just like to jump in with, uh, Christine on that. I, I, my, what I would see happening is that the point of contact would be Karen. She would then contact the committee and then when they come up with an idea that it would be forwarded to the full council for discussion and then they can make their decision off the full council's, uh, commitment.
Thank you, Junior. So I'm thinking, should the city manager be the one to send out the information? Cause do we have, if council members talk to each other online?
As long as, as long as you don't reply all, you're okay.
That was my question. Don't reply all in discussion. Is that the, the direction or?
Yeah, don't, if you reply all in an email and you all start corresponding, then that's.
That will be designated as a form. That will, uh, Mr. Andrew, you have your hand.
I just wanna make sure that then this is going to require the council to check their email every day. Because I think if you intend to do this in fifteen weeks, that, that the pressure's gonna be on. So when the committee decides that, oh, the brochure looks great and we send it out, then I hope everybody's email is on so they can look at it and reply, okay, or now change those words. They don't make any sense, you know, but I just want you to be clear that this, that email is gonna be more important than ever. So be careful or I'll be texting you.
Yeah, you will. All right. So I think that, uh, that wrap up that section. Anybody else have any discussion on that? Okay, moving right along, we'll go to our action items, job description of city manager. We'll start and take a look at the job description is, I guess my question is the job, the part of the job description, is that the part?
It's in the description, not pretty.
So this is the, this one page.
Yeah, I think we had a header, the, for that, third line will describe what that document is.
Well, I didn't stop this though. So this, this right here is the job description in bulleted form.
And this is almost like there's a little wordsmithy or some organization a little bit that the book that comes straight out of the charter, section twenty-three, city manager job.
Yeah, I saw you stated that as, as far as your resources.
And it's going to be if I brought the client
either in council or OLC.
Oh, I, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning anything. It did.
Oh, okay.
I'm just, this is, this is the proposal of the job description. So I think I just had two, when I was, just two, two questions. The part of qualifications. I have no problem with bachelor's or bachelor's degree. The question I had was five years of administrative experience. What does administrative, to me, administrative is, is vague. Do we want to clarify that, be more specific? Because if I'm administrator at a plant manager, does that give me qualifications to do that? If I am an administrator of a school district or administrator of who knows what? I was just, did.
There are some, if I may, there are some specific elements in the job description that address directly, um, government rules and ethical qualifications, the elements that you would need to have so that you could be a good resource for any incoming council. Um, it also addresses specific items associated with, um, government, including project management. And I know it could be the production manager at Calvin North America and have and can have project management or background, but, um, some of these items, items are very specific to government work.
Understood. Uh, let's see. Oh, the other part I didn't, maybe I just didn't see it is there was nothing in here or maybe there was and I just didn't see it, that the city manager needs to live in the city of the board.
So I don't think that that's in the job description. That would be in this, that would be in separate element of the charter or the, um, the job offer.
That should be the job description. I don't know.
The job description tells what we do with the job. We're not even allowed according to The job description tells what we do with the job, we're not even allowed according to the HR directives to include salary or compensation. Or any of those things inside the job description.
So we put that somewhere else?
Those things are placed on business.
I also have those thoughts and we do have, not to jump ahead, but we do have the salary compensation. Which kind of tied into that where we don't, it doesn't list the relocation costs, there would be any compensation for that. Which kind of then is, we want you to live here.
So even though I've seen in other versus like salary benefits for consideration, not only to live in the city of Norman. But to, if you don't live here, to move here within a certain time period.
What part would that go in?
I don't think that that was a consideration that the committee worked on specifically. We didn't work on that as an element, that would be something that maybe SGR would know where to put that, I think that's part of our brochure.
Junior Drago, you have the floor.
I I think, yeah. I'm having some feedback here. I believe that, yeah, that information would probably be on the the applica, I don't know, the the notification for hiring, not in the job description.
Yes, Chief SoCo. My recommendation would be that that's under your conditional offer employment and you'll talk about the wage scale. You'll talk about requirements through the city limits, all that kind of stuff would be in conditional offer.
Thank you. That's for somewhere else, yes, thank you. Yes.
But I think it's an excellent point, so then SGR is going out to do their recruitment, that the people they're seeking to know that that would be a condition of their part. It's part of the charter.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So what we what I typically do when I interview each of you and I'll ask what your preferences are in that regard. And it is important that it goes into the recruitment profile so that I understand what you're looking for and candidates also have a clear understanding.
I think in our charter, it says you can't live in the city limits, I don't think it's a decision. For the candidate to make.
I was suggesting that, I was saying that they need to know that in order to.
No, I agree on what you said, okay.
Is there any other discussion about the job description that we have in front of us?
Just a question of consideration, if if business administration seems like it could be rewarded, is there suggestions from the council? If you want rewarded or from the mayor, what might be better, I'm just taking notes.
I was good with the administrative experience because if they didn't have city government, they wouldn't be able to on the other part, so I was, I could live with. Any others? This will be a motion, I think.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
I, you know, in reading the job description, there were several references that probably need certified, cleaned up. For example, throughout the. Process, it talks about the ideal candidate, that's good for a job posting, but you're, this is a job description, so it's the city manager. And you talk about the city manager in like line five. Along with the manager who are effective, line eight, the city manager would need your team and 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 be all education required. So I would suggest we clean up the language, take out ideal candidate, because we're not a candidate, we don't want you hired in very much. So I would just clean that up.
Thank you, Chief SoCo, any other comments concerning that? Appreciate you, but. Yes.
Would it be okay, and I'm asking, if we find the description agreeable, could we say we agree on this, wants to change to a form? For us to to change and then bring it back?
I don't think, I don't think this is holding us up on the process because we hired a company. So I don't think this, the the language is holding it up, but the maybe we're really hard on this. And with some minor changes, I don't think it's. Couple editing issues and we did, it's cleared up, but I. If the city manager is the only piece that we need to change. Yeah, I won't say until we decide that the city manager is willing to change.
Right, well, we may have mixed our, mixed our, I don't want to say that, of course, it's not that, we may have mixed things in that. We're looking for a job description and we were trying to do recruitment and it kind of got put in the same document. So that's fair, we can probably tease out that recruitment side, but HR take care of that.
Yes, Chief SoCo.
It would be really nice if if we use the cities intended that we use for job descriptions. To keep everything uniform, to use the same type of format for. For the job descriptions.
Absolutely.
You're talking this, well.
It's a different one, it's somewhere here, so we did get it actually from Cheryl Harris, Cheryl, her name. Two years ago, and we're transitioning all our job descriptions since they're all the same template so that we don't. Miss anything on any piece of description so that, you know, everybody has qualifications and it's all filled in and it's apples to apples. Job duties, you know, it's all apples to apples, so we can send that template out and then just take this and fit it to the template.
Yes, there's, there's, there definitely some. This is great for a job posting. The language, it sounds like a job posting, because you're talking about that you're seeking experience in management professional and stuff. You don't typically put that in your job description, so I I I think it would be helpful if 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 that was rewritten and some of that language taken out. Use the template that the that the city has for the job description, which is going to hit to your supervisory system, your general duties. The task, and the other thing that might be a good idea is, you know. Has anybody asked Karen what her job description should look like?
And in fact, she submitted documentation to us for.
And and that was included?
We, she sent them under 2003, that Rex Madder signed, and she sent, she sent email of all of the content that she gives, that she currently does to all of the email servers. And then we used that information, the charter, which had her exact description, that what she was supposed to be able to do in this job. And then we also used a version from the state with all of them. So we didn't just rewind one bit, but we used all of them.
Yes.
That's an excellent point, and Karen, I would like to, Karen, obviously, we discussed it, I did bring up the comment perhaps. In reviewing the 2003 job description, we need to be on a speed as to what your responsibilities are, your tasks to make sure you cover it. So if we miss any of that, it's imperative that we issue a fair credit, absolutely.
So should there be a meeting, which may the city manager, people who be able to. Give a opinion on what they like, what they don't like it, I don't, to be able to make sure we go the right way or is that the wrong way?
Well, I I. I don't want to ask city staff to do something that they don't know, it's not a member that's big surgery. So if that's something that Karen would like to take the job description, see that we're in this format. So the, because we don't have a city letter, had we, and I access those information, that document. So we were kind of looking to outline the process. But if you could look at this information, put it in there and then want to set an appointment with Leslie and Isaac and I and they'll. Try to make that happen. Yeah. Yeah. We'd be, I'm hoping that.
What do you think, Brenda?
I'm just thinking as I'm reading, would I, that. This looks different than the job description I have, this is for sure, so I guess I would need to read it. Concentrate on it, and yeah, I. I'm to the point, I I just want to do whatever we want to do and move on, so whatever you decide will work out.
Well, we would like to, but I don't think we want to do it on either, so if if you want to put it into that format. That she's describing, and then we can meet with you and tease out if there's any being in your job that you currently do that you don't find in that job description.
I guess. Like, like you said, I think some of this in here is more like a a job posting. Because I don't know as. That part of my job description is the ideal manager candidate will understand the Oregon City County Managers Association COVID ethics. As it relates to the compliance of Oregon Public Meeting Hall. I think what you're asked, what you're, what that says to me is that. I need, because this is like an organization that you kind of get credited for, for every meeting you go to, kind of an operation. I think that's a job, I think, I don't know if that's in the job description.
Yes. It may be more under skill or knowledge, as well as what the template helps out with, you have the different categories and so you just take every line and and fit it in the template. And then you can see, okay, we're missing something here, or this one actually needs to split up, part of it goes here and part of it goes there. The template is really helpful to get it all where it needs to be and remove the, like the recruiting wording from there, so.
I mean, why didn't they start that first?
I think you just found the job.
Is it, okay, and that, is it okay then at this point that knowing that it needs to be cleaned up? And that we have some things to do to it, that we set aside some time, the committee and staff to to master it and then present it at our next meeting. And so just see over.
I think that would be appropriate.
Just as you are needed to move forward.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know.
So I, I don't know, Mark, if you're on, can you answer the question, do, does SGR need the job description in order to put together?
Well, yeah. We can start with whatever you have, even if it's just a draft. And and so oftentimes I'll work with the city and they end up changing their job description as a result of our process, so I don't, I. We'll get too hung up on what we have because it can always change, just get comfortable with it, but we will use it. And then once you see the brochure, you'll have another chance to, you know, edit it either way for years of experience, what have you. So that will be the starting point, though, whatever you have as far as the current job description.
So I guess we need to come to a agreement that it's good enough for us to use, this is the job description of the 2003 job description that I established.
You would have to add some minutes to that, 2003.
Right, so do you need to agree to use this one in order to get it into the correct format? Because I think that is required for the, for another meeting, we do have to have a job description.
I don't think, I don't think this is appropriate enough to approve based on what our discussion was tonight.
I think that we can, can we share it with the recruitment agency and then at that point we'll finesse it, we'll come back and approve it at that point and then we.
I do agree with Leslie, I think what he's, what Mark has said was that the information that we have currently in this format is enough for them to get started and start the. The brochure and then we can finesse it and then the next meeting we'll be able to get those two separated out and finesse it and make the final decision then.
Okay, sorry, you all have a great conversation and it's, yeah, I don't have anything else.
All right. So we have a consensus to share this with SGR and be able to move on and then at the next city council meeting, we will take a look at the presentation. From the city council or city manager meeting about the job description moving forward.
Would it be that time then that we give a public opportunity to comment when the format has probably been put in and it's clearer what the the verbiage is? I just don't want to look like we're skipping over a section to allow public to comment on the job description.
We're having. We're having a public comment, oh, I see what you're saying. There's a public still comment today.
I I don't, I'm sorry, not to test back and forth, I don't view this as a hang up, you know, I just want to make sure if our two attendees came to mention on that portion specifically, if their time didn't get overlooked.
I don't have a problem with it, I mean, it'll be in the packet, I would imagine it'd be in the packet, if they look at it and have any comments, so. Comment will be before we do anything, so, yeah. Ready to move on from. Here around salary.
I'm still on, okay. As I said in the last meeting when I was giving the presentation, I just want to refer to the council that our current city manager has passed on a raise for multiple years. Her current salary is a hundred thousand dollars, you don't want to speak, and what is presented is just a range that we thought would be the right area for us to just.
What kind of research did you do to find this competitive salary?
So we went to various other places that were hiring city managers with population size approximately ours. And their advertisements were in this range and we wanted to be competitive.
Listen.
I think in. I think in the next few things that were on our agenda, maybe affected by the fact that we have selected a recruitment agency and I think that I would like to see us maybe touch on each of these items this evening. For all the comments and also have a server to recruitment agency for their feedback so that we can incorporate that in our next meeting and be feel more solid.
Recruitment agency for their feedback so that we can incorporate that in our next meeting and be feel more solid about making final decisions.
So you don't wanna make a salary decision tonight?
Not necessarily, SGR has some more data available to them based on the current rates and what would be competitive, so if we're off the mark, I would like to hear that feedback and make this as solid as possible.
I would think it would be a budget tonight. We should have, I mean, we should kind of have a budget of what we wanna do, I think the. Uh, salary is an appropriate decision that we made tonight, we didn't talk to, uh. Our financial director, I don't believe. On whether or not we can afford that.
Um, we, like I said, anticipating that our city management retire, um, along with recruiting fees, we did a budget for a position at a hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, the one sixty five would be out of that budget range. Um, and just depending on all the other figures, because there's percentages that I have to calculate, um, what if we go with. Because once you raise the salary, then things like furs also come up and so overall I'd have to kind of look at that. Um, to see if we may have to do sort of a supplemental budget in the process if we're going with, you know, those final numbers, um, but a hundred and fifty thousand is what is budgeted.
Um, and I, um. That, I think there's a difference between the, what we need a budget for and then also our recruiting, um, because I've heard, um. Differences in opinion as far as posting a salary range versus, um, not posting, um, and rather not posting a salary range or not posting. Um, you know, based on experience, um, different things like that, because you will, um, I think the rationale is that you will have individuals that will see that higher. Number and say, well, that's what I wanna get paid, um, and so I think I agree with, um, council and Leslie that. I would like to hear from SGR as we get started as far as what they were in, in their recruitment process.
Councilor Grigio.
So, I'm just curious if there's any consideration given to the fact that Boardman is one of the fastest growing communities. Uh, in the state of Oregon and how that could affect the salary range as well.
Councilor Grigio, most definitely, I was considering knowing my career and how rapidly this community is growing, um. I tend to respond to investors and people who contact us that we may have a small population, but we deal with big municipality challenges and growth, um, that's worth coming, so yeah, that's definitely considered.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was getting at, that I assumed that that's maybe why your salary range was a little higher than some of the other ones and I agree with that.
Yes.
And we, we did wanna be flexible, because we weren't sure if we would be able to attract someone with all of the things that are in our job description or if we would be, um. Basing it more on their skill sets and determining whether they're a hundred fifty five or a hundred sixty five, so.
So we even agree with that we should, uh, table it for our next meeting and now we can have our finance director give some more input on what we can and can't do. And, um, we give SGR idea of what our salary. Should be versus what we can afford or can't afford. Does that seem like something to do, put on the next agenda? We got a job description review, salary range and benefits for city manager review. For their next agenda. Yes.
Can I ask something then? I think that you should consider when you're considering the wage, that. I think this, I think now that you're going to need to think about an assistant city manager in the not too distant future. And I'm not opposed to the salary that you're doing, but I think when we start really looking at the budget. We need to think about that, okay. Because we haven't discussed, and I don't know if this is the time. But. We haven't discussed at all a. Be Hipple. Or a new city manager. Or even a stent. I, I, I have none of those things, so some of the things that. That you're, that you, the new person will cost, we need to think about those things, then.
That would be on the benefit side of the, or.
Yes, yes, yeah, but I, but I'm talking money now.
Correct, absolutely, it's money.
It's a money thing, so keep that, we need to keep that in our conversation here, I think.
No reason I said the, um, the benefit act, because to be able, be able to talk about it in a state analysis, that's why I said that.
Well, I think.
Go ahead.
Um, I think that some of those things have to be done in a public meeting, so that's why we wanted to turn here, but. Maybe it's something that when we're doing, when you go over the job description, maybe the committee can work with Karen and Marta. To look at what are some of the other things that would be required possibly, so that we can put together a proposal for the whole council to review. On a benefit package that could include possibly food expenses to get here. I don't know, something along those lines, so there's been a number of things, there are a number of things to be mentioned, so.
I don't think you're gonna just like.
Well, you look at it like, you think that's a good idea.
I didn't say a word.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Well, they're not coming from Florida. I know, um, so we'll move on right on, I think we're, the timeline is gonna be produced by SGR, I would imagine that timeline will be SGR directed.
And there, there's one in their pack, in the packet.
Yes, it's on, yeah.
And so. I. When I seen that in the packet, I decided that if we made an agreement with them by the twenty third of September, that's why your calendars are at your spot, because I want you to, and, and leave them there, because we'll be discussing it, you know. So we can make an agreement with them by the twenty third. It is fifteen weeks to the very end of December. Which, so, so we can't, we can't put off making decisions to the next council meeting is what I'm trying to say. So, um.
So we're gonna have to have our ducks in a row.
Well, we may have that a lot, I mean, or, well, or, yeah, I don't, whatever, but I just am trying to say that, uh.
You realize I'm a little bit of a conservative really busy.
Well, I think in their proposal, they actually have a contingency plan that says if they have. If it's during holiday windows, it may extend that fifteen weeks of it, right?
I would say it more for the, for us. I mean, that's what I'm thinking, I don't know.
We should have turned and change our retirement date.
So that, that, I would, that's my rough, I mean. So we'll play it as here as we go on. We're all very busy, I see.
I was gonna ask if Karen was gonna think that we should request special needs, but the conversation seems to be felt right now, it sounds like it kind of depends on when we get, um, connect the third to get the job description, clean up slash SGR, um. Um, but, again, my conversation, my question was asked.
I think we play it by ear and see where we go, I. Let's not go weekly meetings.
We're, are we two weeks out from our next, uh, council meeting?
We're one, two. We're, we're.
We're, yeah, we're about three days.
Little bit more, little more, or.
One day short.
So. So. Karen brought up something about the twenty third, we need to do something by the twenty third, so we want to do something by the twenty third.
Get edited with the, with the lawyer and that.
I, I, I just wanna get an agreement. Mm-hmm, completed with them, I mean, so that we can start really legally talking to them, I can't just ask them to volunteer a couple of weeks' time while.
So that would be the next thing we do is we get a, some sort of a contracted agreement of what we're gonna do. To start the process.
And I guess I'm assuming the reason we're putting it off from tomorrow to the twenty third, so we can have, let's look at a lawyer or something.
Well, I just thought, I didn't know how much decisions you were gonna make tonight either, when I was thinking about that earlier today.
Well, and I thought the point of society, Karen and the committee members looking at the contract is to get that started, potentially have another.
Yeah.
I have one comment on, uh, the agreement, um, it, we have a five-page agreement in here that I'm guessing is gonna be like the contract. Which Karen will probably send to our board for final review and okay, um, something we've previously done on contracts, because there is no name listed on here for the signing for the city. We do either get a motion from city council for Karen to sign. Um, on behalf of the city or unless you're wanting the mayor, so I think we made a motion for that, otherwise that may hold us up.
But it's the same on the contract, it's gonna be signed and just.
No, it's a city of order and then printed name and title, yeah. So they decide who's gonna be authorized to sign the contract. On behalf of the city.
I'd be happy to do that, tell them when I have to sign and then I will be the. I'll be the one, that's not the city manager.
I, um, move to have Mayor Paul Kiefer be the signer for the SGR contract.
We got lots of seconds.
Who was it? Leslie, okay.
Leslie. Any discussion? All in favor?
High five.
Any opposed? Alright, I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, Brad, you're there. Do you need to view opposed?
I gave an eye.
You gave an eye, alright. I didn't say again, but, thank you. Um. Alright, so I think we're, we're. We'll plan a contingency, what are, what are your thoughts on that? I don't, I didn't understand, what are our thoughts on planning contingencies?
Well, what happens if we get December thirty first and you don't have a city manager yet because of the holidays and those things, because fifteen did, fifteen states right to the border. But it doesn't allow for Thanksgiving, Christmas, those kinds of.
Can we, uh, make that plan contingency now, because, uh, one, she hasn't been elected. Two, she hasn't given her resignation yet. So. Can, is this.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know about those things, have you not started the process for retirement or?
No, I haven't started. I mean.
That was my imagination.
I said, no, I said I'd like to retire at the end of the year, and I mean, not next year.
Now, I do know that there are. Things that we can do, I know that, um. There are, I know that, what is leading Oregon cities, leading Oregon cities have interim city managers, uh, I know if we were to lose out on the city manager. And our city manager couldn't function, then our police chief takes over as the acting interim city manager. I do know those two things are in place. That can happen, uh, and the third thing is. Is she retires and we find something. But.
I wouldn't want to leave, I mean, there's just no, I, I don't wanna leave without somebody. Not here to take the job, I mean, that's all there is to it, you know, then.
I'm not gonna fire you, but I don't wanna suck.
Okay.
But.
Well, in the last meeting, she said her last day was December thirty first, and so I got to make eighteen weeks, we're riding this that border, we're gonna be two halves, several big holidays. So I don't wanna leave us anywhere either, um. There is a process of leading Oregon cities where they have people who apply for jobs and say which channel to work in and et cetera, et cetera, we did review some of that online, I don't know if it's cost associated with. Somebody who worked part-time, not part-time, for short terms, but a temporary employee, yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell you that's really dysfunctional if you really are going to hire another city manager. There is nothing worse for. Because I have always said, and I, if I had known I was gonna stay longer than six months, or. The day you walk in and take your job. You set your goal, you set the.
Thank you.
The climate for the, for the office. And if you don't do that and you wait a year or two, then it's like retaliation. So I. If I were going, if I said I'm gonna leave and I'm never coming back and you guys just then start that process so that you know your six months or a year before you get a new city manager. Then I would look at an interim, but, or a short time. I think all of us would rather buck up and take on the challenge than to have. To break in somebody new for a couple of months and then try to help the new person come in. I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Is there a fine place for training when you city manager? Are we going to, say you didn't get a council position, um. Could it be like contract, like we did with the finance director, to have, um, that training in place? Do we need the training?
I don't wanna leave you to lurch, I, I really want. That person to know. Just the, the phone numbers for, you know, I mean, there's just the small things that are, um, because if they're, if they're really qualified people, they're gonna understand. All, all you need, all we probably would need to do is make sure that. Because hopefully they're gonna understand some construction, since we're doing a lot of it right now. You know, so that if they go to the job site, that. They don't just believe. Whatever somebody's telling them, I mean, they have a little, you know, saying, oh.
Good question.
So.
I just think that you would be available as a contractor.
I'm not leaving the county, nor am I moving, so.
But if she's on the council, definitely.
And they're waiting for it, I don't know, but I, I don't know, I don't know, but.
No.
Maybe we can deal with that.
Well, we're getting a bit, that's a good thing, sure. So.
Very, very good of planning contingency there. Alright, thank you for being very patient, because we're gonna have, uh, our time for our public comment. If you would like to have a public com.
I think it's about paper this time.
Um, I don't think anybody's going to probably object to that, if you wanna stand up and introduce yourself again for the record and, uh.
My agenda, my, yeah, my first, I'm very, very, uh, with all the, the other side. There, um, my name's Kathy Street, I live in Bornan, in six five five, Southwest Town Road Avenue. I only have two questions, number one, does the city have a human resource officer? That was the suggestion that SGR said that they work with sometimes as a HR officer and my second thing was, we did look at the charter, you know, the city manager was required to move into the city department. So that was a move, um, thing, but, um, I think. Having a current city manager be in the position of the main contact with recruitment. Can put that person in a really tight spot for people looking for, um. Possible violations of the city names, so I just. I don't envy that person being in that spot at all, and that's it.
Thank you.
I just aim for listening.
You have no comment?
I have no comment, this is very interesting.
Well, thank you, well, thank you for coming, thank you for sharing. So we'll go to other business, we'll talk about the IGA Board managing Oregon Resources Official.
We included in your packet, uh, more, more information than we had in your last packet.
It's all that.
Yeah, so that you understood, um, it was clear what, what we were. Yeah, so that you understood, it was clear of what, what we were trying to accomplish with this. And we left it, this is the, usually all of our intergovernmental agreements and organs and stuff are in a certain format. This is the format they asked us to use, so we changed it back and put their format in your packet this time. The wording and everything is the same, we just changed the work of the papers. And so in your packet, we showed, I, I wanted you to see the, probably the last page. It's kind of a colored page, and so that you can see the other places that have agreements with this more company. And so when we signed this agreement, we could go to any one of these companies on their communities or counties on this list and, you know, try to work a deal with them. Like if I needed sand and they had a lot of sand for some reason, I could go say, you know, or let's say if I needed a water truck and they, they had a water truck, I could work with them. And it makes, it makes it just so much easier when you already have your agreements in place. And like I said last time, Moore County has already paid the electricity on our Wilson Road right out here, so I need to pay them, so.
We're looking for a motion.
And I moved to approve the intergovernmental agreement with more managing Oregon resources efficiently. And we're at the city manager executive agreement on behalf of the city of orderment.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Councilor Ball Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Webber.
Yes.
Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Heaper.
Yes. Okay, so that passes, we'll move on to motion for signers on escrow to retain at councils.
Yes, on July second, we had established the resolutions in order for us to open the measure retention accounts that was required by law with our construction projects. The council member that was appointed as one of the signers was Paul Eagle, who shortly after that resigned, and so it all came to a halt and those accounts have been opened. So I need the city council to appoint or to list who the signer will be on these accounts.
So we.
Three, with this, last time we had decided on three being the city manager, one of the signers, the mayor, and then one council member, which at that time had been Paul Eagle.
So we need a motion to assign a council member as, and I'm fairly of motion for yourself.
A motion for Isaac Alpin Williams to be included as a signer.
I have a motion. Okay, we're gonna give it out on the record. All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Junior. So that one, I know there's not any prepared comments, but I just wanted to go on record and say I appreciate the work that our committee did. I didn't quite say that enough, and I really do appreciate the time and effort that the committee has done. And I look forward to more, more things from the committee in the same manner. So that being, having said that, this meeting is adjourned.